This is Tuesday, March 11th, 2025 at 5:00 p.m. This meeting will be conducted in person in the City Council chambers and via remote video and teleconference pursuant to one MRS A section 403A. Members of the public may join the meeting by phone by dialing 1-929-205-6099 using meeting ID 85879040820 and password 510071 or via the link provided. And I think it's really funny, a dyslexic person reading all those numbers, so I hope I really got the right numbers across. All right. Members of the public may also submit comments by using the form on the city's website under government slash city council, contact the council. This is a budget workshop of the city council and not a business meeting of the city council. The meeting is open to the public but not a public hearing. That'll be March 18th will be the public hearing. The chairperson shall, which is me, shall conduct the work session with the committee members and may elect to call upon the public in attendance for either questions or to obtain input and information. All work products will be developed by consensus and forward as advisory to the city council for any further, any manner warranting legislative action by the city council at its business meeting so posted and assembled. Would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now for roll call. You okay? Deputy Mayor Hurley. Council Martel.
Present.
Council Hitchcock.
Present.
Council Trenchmontane.
Present.
Council Hanseman.
Present.
Council Stackpole.
Present.
And I am Mayor Brink. Also with me are down at the podium is City Manager Steve Buck and up beside me is Larissa Ricketts. And if I only knew what your name was. Executive Administrator, thank you very much. Also, for those people who are in the audience, you have some lovely cakes down there that Michelle made and she actually gave each one of us one up here, but you guys didn't see what we got from Ann. She made these very clever cookies that talk about the council. So she's really serious about budgeting. It must be her favorite month in the whole year. So she, one section of our cookie says, what people think the city council gets paid. That's always interesting. It is a big pink section. If they only knew, it should be a teeny little section. What departments actually need is another section. What people want to pay is another very teeny section. And then what we need to cut. Big section because she's an accountant. All right. So let's move right ahead. See, we do have some sense of humor here. So let's move ahead for the minutes in order to approve the minutes from the city council budget meeting held on March 4th, 2025. May I have a motion, Ann?
Still move, Madam Mayor.
May I have a second, Nate?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you very much. And now on to new business, the presentation of the 2025-2026 municipal budget. So Steve Buck is going to take it away.
Yes, so for this evening, we're going to start out with a presentation. There's a series of further information that the council had asked for. We're going to go through that further information first, give that to you. Then I'd like to do a brief synopsis of how we've gotten to the current point in the budget that we're at. And then based upon the additional information and other feedback that we've gotten over the last series of workshops and/or the budget meeting, the budget meeting that we had last week, we've prepared a further amendment sheet. And if you indulge me on that amendment sheet, I believe that I can give you a series of recommendations along with your guidance tonight to get you to a point of 6%. So it cuts our starting, we were just under 12% when we started out with the budget and that will have cut that by more than half, so. Right, so starting off with the information that we have here this evening, and I'm going to ask a couple of the department managers to come up at the appropriate time to help relay this information. We've provided statistics for all main libraries. We'll have, we'll go over that information in preparation for the council's later consensus action as far as taking some possible readjustments there. We have the Lafayette building carrying costs. School Department has already voted to dispose of that building back to the city. They've made it known that they're not going to carry those carrying costs in their budget for the ensuing fiscal year that we're developing now, so we'll consider how the city takes on those costs. And I have some recommendations there as well. We're going to review the fire hydrant winter care contract. We've been offered a one, three, and five-year synopsis on that. We'll talk about the Sanford summer recreation camp fees. That was talked about quite a bit at Property Sub this morning, but we have a cut sheet on that as well as Brady is here to present on that. The Department of Public Works, the municipal employees versus contractors. That question was asked, is it cheaper to contract versus doing it with the Public Works Department? Matt Hill, our Director of Public Works, is here to give you, hopefully out of his 40 slides, he'll use the first five. And the other 35, you can take as supporting information. I think you'll see where he went with that. So somebody in our finance department said, we're not putting all of that in there. I said, oh, yes, we are because he did the work. So that supporting documentation is in your packet. And then the last one was, has been a large topic of conversation about the municipal stockpiling of road salt, how that's budgeted, where it needs to be this fiscal year, and I think we're going to be able to bring you some significant savings as far as that is concerned. All right. So Council Trenchmontane provided us with the information at the last meeting relevant to the main libraries. And so I'm going to ask the council if you can go over this information and I'll go through this in preparation for later possible amendment.
I asked, I asked for basically, just like a McDonald's or if you own a business and you serve customers, how many customers do you serve a day? And I wanted to know Springvale's and I wanted to know Sanford's. And I did it for 2003 because we wanted to make sure we're good all moved. We didn't want to screw anything, you know, or mislead anybody. So what I found was that basically, let me go to the other page that I have. Let's see where I can pull this up. I have it right here. So right now, on the very second page where it says main libraries, complete workbook, FYC, sorry, FY23, there is, it says total in-person, offlight program and attendance. And on there, one of the things that I found was way off on numbers was registered users. And what happens is they have to every three years redo their library cards so they don't build up. So you're saying you're servicing 100,000 people. And right now, Springvale, this keeps bouncing sideways, so sorry. I'm trying to keep up with this. So Springvale right now is 2,165 for registered users. And then Sanford put in 1,371. I'm sorry, yeah, 13,000. So right now, sorry, this is screwing me up. It's bouncing. So right now, it's most likely the fat fingered the one and it's 3,700. So that blows all those numbers out. So that's what got me going at first. And the same thing with the numbers served. And again, you can find that, it's 91. Let's see, it's probably right there where that blank one is. Yeah, so with the blank areas, it must have been my handwriting that got blanked out, but it's 90 to 91. So that's telling me, I understand the Springville Library for total square footage is a difference versus our beautiful Goodall Library that's coming. So I understand there's a difference where we fill books and there's a difference in price. But this is, this is way out of whack for what they've been doing. And if you go to their fundraiser on here, we have, which I have a huge problem with, the fundraiser is the very beginning on the very fourth page, and the fundraiser is zero for Goodall Library. Okay, there's, there's been no effort to bring any revenue in. And then over here for the Springvale, those are attendance, but it'll be on here somewheres. They made $40,000, the Springvale Library, so they wouldn't have to let people go. All year, they invested five and made 40. So I want to make sure that we're properly funding and not overfunding another because of these, these, these numbers. So I want to turn it to Steve and let him do his thing with Maura and Nathan and really get a hold of this. And I do, I'm not throwing, I just, I know you guys are right on. So I would, I would like to give more thought into the, like 10% that we're going to do for the, for the Springville, obviously. I don't know until we get the better numbers from, from Goodall if we bump them up yet or not because we don't know what their costs are. So that, that's where I'm stuck and that was all the information I brought to you guys last time. And I didn't bring it in enough time and I was sorry about that. I thought I got a home run for everybody and I was supposed to turn it in a little earlier. I had no idea. We'll learn it.
All right, and Maura?
Okay, so this is, this was the proposal and we got to talk about it as a full council, but this was my thought process on libraries. First of all, there, we know we're underfunding libraries in general. Goodall has asked for a huge ask. We're making a recommendation of the same 10%. So it's vastly below what they're asking us for. So we've already recognized there's a problem and we don't want to fund at this huge cost of a problem. But at the same time, our library is being underfunded. We need to preserve. So I think keeping that 10% for both libraries, that's what I would like to continue to do through this process.
And you feel that'll preserve them and we're not going back?
No, wait, I'm not done. I'm not done. So I think the entire amount that we usually give Goodall plus the 10% should be held in escrow. I don't think they should actually be given money until we've worked through a list of concerns. One, I'm going to recommend the city council ask for an audit of the financials because it's been a rocky year and there is, the board completely disappeared. There's a person in charge who doesn't technically have the training to be a library director. All that needs to be fixed, so I'd like to see the audit. I'd like to see them, a conversation about their board of directors, lease agreement with the city for the building, a new, they definitely need to do bylaws, but that would come once the board of directors is seated and they need to hire an appropriate library director. That's kind of where I'm headed, but I don't, I can't do this alone, obviously. This is something that the council would have to recommend to them and have a conversation with them. But I don't think any funding should go towards them. I think it should be held.
Okay.
On the flip side, I 100% agree with the fundraising, but until you have a proper active board in place, you can't do that.
Yeah, they're not going to do anything.
They, Springvale has an amazing active board and group of people who do the fundraising. I mean, if you look through the list of people, they have a great fundraising, you know, very upbeat board. They do have a very good board for that and they have a blend of people that they need. I mean, if you look at the list, you'll recognize a bunch of people and say, oh yeah, this person would be good for this aspect of what a board needs and this person would be good for this aspect of what a board needs. I don't, I didn't see the same thing with the Goodall Library Board prior to this situation and I have no idea who's on there now. So I don't, Pete, you know, it's great that you got the information. I feel like I'm pitting one library against each other and I don't want to do that. So that's why I'm thinking Springvale asked for 10% and they're doing it based on some good fundraising, good numbers. Okay, 10%, but held. I don't know if that's allowed. I'm assuming that's allowed, Steve, for us to hold it once we've raised it and then do what we need to do. So that's kind of my thought.
And I would say that would have to probably be part of our motion to say we're going to put, fund it, but hold it in escrow until it can be straightened out.
I'm in favor of that. That's a great idea.
We figured you would be.
Well, there's this definite issue going on and I think this is a good give and take right here.
And what we want to do is we want to not punish the library because they've been struggling. What we want to do is edify them, bring them up and bring them up to the speed they need to be at because Sanford needs, having one library in Springvale, one end of our community, having another down at the other end, and both of the libraries are in walking distance of some various cultures that we have within Sanford-Springvale area, which is what we're striving for. And with all the new apartments, especially near the Sanford, well, both Sanford and Springvale have new apartments.
That's right.
Huge amount of apartments and that's walking distance. So I, I think that libraries are changing what they do. They're just not a place you go to get books anymore. They're a place for research, they help you research, they do activities within the libraries now, they do community building things, which is what we're looking for.
I went and I saw that there was homeschool student activity in that resource room downstairs. They're busy all the time. Both libraries are very important to Sanford.
So that's, you know, and we can, I just, I would like to support the 10%.
Okay.
But I mean, I don't know when we're taking votes and stuff on the budget, but I would like to continue to support the 10%.
Well, we're going to do the March 18th meeting so we can hear from the public because we wouldn't want to vote on anything until the public, what we're going to do is just consensus. This is what we're thinking we need to have in the budget and we'll vote on it either at the March 18th meeting if we have time or we'll vote on it the next meeting. So we have another one after that too, Tuesday.
Yeah, and I know our meeting is going to get across to Goodall. I think there's a lot of brewing in the background. I mean, I've heard from some people, I think the mayor has heard from some people. We are, and I will say it to their face, we're very concerned. You're going to have to answer some questions. It's not going to be easy, but you know, we also have the option.
And actually, I've heard from multiple board members upset with what's happening right now in the live, new board members. They want it to change and they're very concerned. So we need to step up, we need to help them. They're asking for our help. Ann?
Yes.
So I'm going to rock the boat just a little bit. One, I want to recognize that the fundraising at Goodall is a little bit different from Springvale, so they, they go after endowment funds. So I think it's a little bit, I'm very proud of the work that Springvale Library does with our fundraiser and I would say Goodall's fundraising, if you will, is significant, but it comes through endowment funds with investment income proceeds. So they did some work at some points and they've won endowments to allow them operations. So that is, we can't discount, right? So when I look at their budget over the last three years for '21, '22, '22, '23, '23, ' '24, you know, almost half their budget in '22 and '21 came from other non-city revenue. That being said, they operated at a profit in the last three fiscal years, somewhat significant profit. So when I look at what we're trying to accomplish with our net to taxation and looking at trying to get our numbers down, I'm proposing, or would propose to the council conversation around 15,000 fixed to each library. I don't, I don't know that Goodall needs it. And then also to be clear, they were asking us to fully fund their budget for '25, '26. So I'm, I don't, I don't know that I want to fund even 10% to Goodall.
Okay. So I would say maybe nothing for Steve's adjustment tonight and we'll have that discussion at 18:00. Or, I mean, I see what you're saying, Ann, but at the same time, I don't know where they are after the construction.
We don't have, so there, historically, their financials appear to be audited. When I look at the backup materials, I don't see like an actual auditor's letter, but they do reference audited financials. And we don't have, to be fair, the '24, '25 financials, which ended in June, so that could be helpful to even get draft financials from them. But again, I, when I look at these financials, I don't feel comfortable. They accumulated over a million dollars in the last three fiscal years.
I actually think there's an audit that's necessary. That's like, I don't know what's happening and I think that...
But that makes me hesitate to fund even 10%.
Well, it's, yeah.
Increase, so I want to continue funding, but increasing it further when we're trying to find pennies. To me, that seems like an area where I would consider dropping.
Any other comments? Steve, back to you.
All right, thank you. The next slide pertains to the Lafayette school. School committee is not interested in continuing supporting Lafayette schools. We had a series of conversations around what's the next use for Lafayette school. It's ranged from many years ago, pre-building and renovation for the, for the middle school and the elementary schools. We had a committee working on the future reoccupation of Lafayette and it was going to be based upon a number of nonprofit organizations that were going to provide services within the neighborhood. Every effort being made to ensure that the building was still providing public benefit to the neighborhood and also remaining a source of pride and, and a center of excellence within the community that the school has always been. Moving from there, it was used during COVID for holding, holding students because they had to reduce classroom sizes, so they used it then. It was also used during the movement of students as school renovation was, was done. Margaret Chase Smith, the former high school becoming the middle school, the former middle school becoming an elementary school, so the students were shuffled around. As of late, we have looked at several efforts on that. One was to construct that out for workforce housing specific to the defense industry, Portsmouth Naval Shipyard being the largest piece in that. That effort failed in that the defense industry does not have money to renovate the building. If it was completely renovated and ready to go, they would lease it out, but there's no money to do the renovation work. We then pivoted to working with the United Way of Southern Maine on an interesting concept of having daycare incubators in there. So each classroom will become its own business incubator. Individuals would be trained to run daycare centers and then ultimately spoke out from there, open independent centers, backfill in with the next incubator, do that on the first, first floor, common area space, and the lower, lower level daycare is on the first floor and then look at doing worker-type housing on, on the uppermost floor. So the last information that we had on that was about $35,000 to get the pre-engineering done on that, just to know what the final, what the cost would be to achieve that level of renovation, so. From there, the school has sent us further communications that they've already voted to turn, turn the building back, that they had carrying costs of 53,207 that they've taken out of their, their budget to not carry it again in the ensuing year. So if the city votes to take, take that back, we're either going to have to put those carrying costs in, or I would propose kind of a tiered strategy to this in that if you take that back in the short term, short-term meaning almost immediately, make a determination, put that out, that property out for bid, right? The typical process of a local contractor buys that, renovates it into housing and such under that, reoccupies the building. That seemingly could be done in relatively short period of time. If you get into the winter months where you're going to have actual carrying costs for heating and such under that, you'd incur those costs, take that out of reserves and then pay yourself back at the time of sale. So I'm not making, I won't, I would not make a specific recommendation tonight to put that $53,000 in if you fully intend to sell it in the short term as opposed to hold it over the next year. Okay?
Does anybody have a comment on how they feel about that?
Pete?
Ann had a hand up for it.
Sorry, quick question, Steve. It may be something we need to talk about at subcommittee level, but if we put out a bid, we don't have a sense of the range of value that a developer might pay. That would be really hard to predict.
We do not.
Okay. And then while I'm at it, I guess, so Lafayette's a very special school to me. My kids all went there. I think it's been an anchor in the neighborhood. The dream that Beth Dilla Valley had for that building, Maura and I participated in those work sessions. It would have been awesome if that came to fruition. It did not. So my only, you know, cause for pause is making sure that we get a developer in that will recognize the importance of that building into the neighborhood and that something is done well there. But I recognize we're out of other options, I feel like. And the dream of a community center or nonprofit collaboration feels, especially in the current environment we're in, feels like a reach. So I like what you're saying about trying to sell it prior to any big carrying costs.
The great thing is we'll be able to put together a proposal, like request for proposal documents that say, tell us what your vision is and really kind of pin down on someone who might have a good vision for that building and...
Yeah, absolutely. Pete?
Yeah, we're in the driver's seat on this one. I'm full, full for housing. I'm full for that area to be relived in. I also went to that school. I'm a Lafayette alumni. I remember in 1975, I had a sticker from Disney World and I brought it in when I was in third grade, so I've been there a while.
Still there.
It might be. I did sticker it up on the wall, so who knows? I got in trouble for it. But I do think that finding out what it's worth to the 35, study 35,000 would be beneficial because if we can get apartments in there, maybe the shipyard leases the whole thing if, if we do that route. I don't want to limit us, so yeah, I want that to be fully studied, I would think.
I understand you wanting it to be fully studied, which is very costly and we would have to put that in the budget. I would totally back selling the building for something that is appropriate for the neighborhood. So I think I'm probably with Maura about, it is now, because of all the work we've already done on that building and looked, a lot of stuff has already been looked into that it's probably time to sell the building. Bob?
I just wanted to comment on the value of the building. I mean, we, we sold a couple of schools in the past and then, and I'm trying to temper where people are headed because these buildings don't typically get, you don't get a lot of money for these buildings. You know, so if you're thinking we're going to get a million dollars or something for this building, you know, probably more like, I'm really guessing, I mean, 150,000 or something like that. Certainly to cover the cost you're talking about, we may incur, and I don't want you to speculate either. But I mean, I know we, we sold other schools for, you know, $80,000. I think we sold some of the schools up in the very old courthouse. I think that, that 70 now owns, I think we sold that for $30,000. And again, that's years ago, but I just don't want people to think they're going to get a ton of money for it. And certainly if there's no, we've run the course, I would certainly support selling the building and moving in that direction.
Okay. Any other comments? Jonathan?
Yeah, I think I'd be okay with selling the building as long as we've kind of looked at all the avenues and I certainly don't want to put a ton of money into something we're more than likely to just turn around and sell. And like Bob said, there's probably not a ton of money there, so as long as it's stable so that it's not deteriorating, like it has a bad roof or something, I'd rather not put a bunch of money into it just to barely get that back when we sell it.
So on this part before we move ahead is consensus that we would sell the building? And, okay, so could I just have a, yeah, fantastic.
Question.
Go ahead, Jonathan.
Have, have we looked into all the avenues? I mean, I...
We've had a bunch of stuff looked into, yeah, and it's going to be very costly. So I don't think the city wants to take it on as a project because it would cost us a lot.
You've been doing this since the new high school, right? You've been with Lafayette going over all this, so this is nothing new.
Nothing new.
Okay.
Yeah. Ann?
And I just add to that question, Council Martel, the school department also did a lot of due diligence on, in some of the meetings I was able to watch, like work on ideas of reuse and repurposing also.
Yeah, I just don't want it to be, you know, yeah, let's do this.
We've both looked at it.
That's a good question because you don't want to make, just quickly make a decision. That's a good question because you don't want to make, just quickly make a decision. So you're right, Jonathan. We always need to look into stuff.
The great thing I could see, I mean, in all honesty, I could see the building renovated plus other housing put on the same site because it is a decent sized site. So it, it has some decent value, I think.
Yeah, it does. And a playground.
I was just going to say, did we already pull off viable playground equipment? We would do that before interrupting you. If there's viable playground equipment, we could peel that out before it got developed and that sort of thing. Okay, thank you.
All right. Go ahead, Steve.
So part of the, that $35,000 and change that I, that I was quoting, it's a heavier lift to readapt that building for that young age demographic. Where, where the grandfathered aspect of that, you know, closed as a school for students for a number of years now. So you've lost that grandfathering. Stairwells, the sprinkler system that's in there would need, have to, have to be changed for a further standard for the, for the young students and such under that. So that's, that's part of those difficulties that a contractor adapting that for housing only is not going to be hampered by as much as what you would for that purpose that we were looking at. There was a long list of, you're going to have to address this, this, this. It was a long list.
And Steve's had a committee working on this for quite some time, so it's not quick.
Everybody has some incredible ideas, but nobody's got any money, right? All right, the next, the next slide covers our fire hydrant winter care contracts. We've been contracting for... The extender, so they have the, the whips on the hydrants to identify where they are when the snow gets high? Think of living in an area where those whips are under the snow, right?
And that's where Scott comes from.
Well, those haven't been on there for that long because, so our, 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 our crew would hit a hydrant or two per, per winter season. So I asked the water district to put those markers on if we're going to keep paying out for insurances. If they're marked, okay, our bad. But if they're not marked, hmm, not our bad.
I do know 30 something years ago when we built our house and there was a hydrant there and we then talked to the insurance company, we actually got a discount for the hydrant being on our property. So the person who's complaining needs to understand they're probably getting a discount on their insurance because, if they're telling the company there's a hydrant there.
Yeah. I have a hydrant physically at the end of my driveway, on the outside of the street, winter, winter. Okay.
Hey, Steve.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just another comment. My understanding with that extension is if we decide to continue after the one year, that's going to reset the, the quote. So it's going to be probably significantly higher next time around if we don't decide to go to like a three or five year. Is that, is that accurate?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Do we need to have a consensus on that so you know where to go? Are you all set with that?
Uh, let's see. There's not an adjustment on, on the worksheet for this evening.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But anything that's not on there, we can put it in, in on the fly and work with that, so. I'll ask Brady to come up here, Parks and Recreation Director. Had a lot of this dialogue this morning on this particular slide. So Brady, I'll let you describe the fee schedule, the programs and the students in there. And then, you know, we do have a sheet for your consideration as well.
Hi, everybody. Brady Lloyd, Director of Parks and Rec. I first want to say, so there's no confusion. This current $700 fee and the $900 fee that you see in front of you has not been in effect yet. This went into effect July 1, which summer camp had already started and our camp registration was already open in April. So last year we charged $600 and $800. So we're already increasing fees $100 or, yeah, $100 based off of last year. And then I wanted just to say that we offer $5,000 of financial assistance to those who qualify through our application process. This isn't money that we have budgeted into the rec budget. This is money that we just absorb and don't charge people for. So we just, like I said, absorb that. So summer camp, seven weeks. It runs 10 hours a day, 7:30 to 5:30. I'm going to advance the slide just so you can see what other communities are charging. I'm sorry. I don't want to read everything, but you can see we're, we're $300 cheaper to the, the next closest municipality that I found. And then that number just continues to grow substantially. So I just wanted to show you guys that we are currently at least 300 and more likely less than half of what other communities are charging. Any questions off of that? Okay. So our Springville campground, this is just a drop-in program. A lot of these families use it as a needs, on a needs basis. They're not often there five days a week. Some are. But we offer a morning program, an afternoon program. You can see the price points there. Those have also increased off of last year. And this is the first time this price point the public will be seeing going forward. And then vacation camps, this is the one that we did increase because vacation camps in the last two weeks of summer camp happened after July 1. So these rates have been in effect since July 1. Our last increase was 2022 and our full-day camp had roughly 200 kids and our playground camp had 20 in the morning and 10 in the afternoon. So that's, that's the synopsis.
Any questions? Ian?
And Brady, are we at capacity at 200 kids with our projected staffing level?
Roughly, yeah. Yeah. So that gives us about 50 kids per camp at four locations. And that's, we can take a little bit more depending on what we have for staffing, but we're also limited on the number of staff and kids we can put on a school bus.
Got it. Thank you. Pete?
Could you touch bases on the 5,000 that you have for financial assistance? Because I think that's amazing and I don't want that to go without being said what you're offering.
So I don't have a whole lot of information on this. I've, I've asked about it when I first started and I think this has just been past practice.
Okay.
The city has just offered roughly $5,000, give or take, on an annual basis to help families in need. And I want to credit the school as well in past years for also being able to cover roughly 5,000 and even, even up to, I believe last year was closer to the $7,000, $8,000 mark that they had available due to some COVID money, but those funds have dried up. So that's not an option this year.
Thank, thank you for explaining that.
Ian? Would it be appropriate to ask for the subcommittee to report out on the conversation? Or would that be, was there helpful dialogue as we're looking at this this evening?
Yes, there was a lot of dialogue on that. We, we spoke about kids only coming for one week and not the whole summer. Can they register like that? And we talked about that, saying that probably wouldn't be wise because what they're doing is they're bumping somebody else off who could be there for the whole summer. So we didn't think that was good. We talked about increasing the fees even beyond that, like each year going up another 50. Pete, I think you were there too. And we realized that Sanford right now is still a culture that has a, a significant need for these types of programs for their children. And we didn't want to price it out of the market, knowing that there would be kids, which we've had in the past, which for those people who've been here long enough, understand why we have this summer program, is there'd be little kids home alone and they would be wandering our streets and they would, they could get hurt. So that's one of the reasons why we, we've always kept this affordable compared to other communities. So that was kind of the talk, Ian, that we were discussing pros and cons about going up or down or staying the same. And we, we kind of like this fee structure. Pete, was there anything else that I missed?
No, that was pretty much it. He explained why the fees were going out and why they weren't going out to the other communities because it's a challenging economy in Sanford. We don't want to have people not go in with last year.
I think we did talk about, you mentioned something about a form they have to fill out to be a part of the $5,000.
There's an application process.
You know, scholarship to the program. Yes.
That we received from general assistants that they created and we've been using the formula that they, they created for the last few years since I've been here.
Nate?
Was there any potential thought of maybe not touching the resident rate, but going up on the non-resident rate? If we're trying to advocate to, you know, help our culture of, you know, needing affordability, but we still have a non-resident rate, perhaps we, that's something that can be raised up to...
We talked about that.
Okay.
And our concern was having residents being able to sign up first. And there's a two-week lag time in between resident signup and non-resident signup. One other thing you need to be careful of, and we all need to be careful of in dealing with the culture of poverty, is that they have to value what we're offering and they have to, to keep their self-esteem. We have to make sure that they are paying something and, but still affordable. And I think for most people, the 700 for the summer is a pretty affordable price considering what else is out there. And to not cost all taxpayers something, you know, to be able to pay the salaries of the people who are camp counselors who are there and stuff. So I agree, we might in the future maybe go up on the non-resident thing.
Could I just?
Go ahead.
Could I note too, we only had five non-residents out of all of our kids last year. So it's not a huge volume. And at subcommittee, we also talked about potentially reviewing this on a year-to-year basis so that we're not hitting the public with a big, a big increase every few years rather than making a, a smaller incremental increase as we go forward.
Ian?
I wonder if at future conversations around this, so I'm, I'm fine not making a further adjustment. The impact is fairly minimal, I think. And I do recognize what everybody's saying about keeping the cost of our residents low. I think it's a real benefit to our community. I, but I wonder in future conversations around it, if we could consider looking at a sliding scale that's not too complicated to manage related to, you know, maybe some easy things. Are you on SNAP benefits? Do you receive, you know, are, are, it's tough because we're not doing the free and reduced lunch information right now, but, you know, is there something that's easily accessible and data that's already being provided that we could use to have a, this, keep this $700 rate, but increase it? You know, a thousand dollars for some families is still a really good deal to have their kids in daycare for seven weeks. And, and for some is very manageable and also still below the average of all the communities around us. And I, it might get us closer to also covering the cost of the program because I think right now there is some residual cost to run that program that exceeds the camp fees, but I'm not 100% sure. But anyway, I'm fine leaving it for now, but I think it is worth future conversations as we continue.
Definitely. And that's why we're going to keep working on it year after year. Pete?
One more. So the, the family paying the, the 700, did they have to pay it all at once? Or do you allow them to pay weekly or bi-week, bi-monthly? Or how, how does that?
At the start of registration, when they originally sign up, there's a 50% deposit that they put down. And then we're asking that the balance be paid about two weeks prior to summer camp. We've been a little lenient on that in years past, so this year we're going to have a hard, the balance needs to be paid or your child's not going to come to camp until the balance is paid because we've been chasing money and it's a waste of our time.
Yes.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Okay. And...
So we're keeping it the same. We're looking to go live soon.
What's here? Yes.
Seven and nine, perfect. Okay.
And Steve, you need a consensus on that because you're going to be adding that to the budget later? Or do we wait until...
It's on the amendment sheet for your consideration.
Okay, thank you.
These are the increases from last year that are finally taking effect right now.
So when you, when you talked about escalating this over time, it's at current, the current utilization, current rates, $50 increase is $11,500, so.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Brady.
Okay.
That would cover the cost of cheering mats for the school department, just saying.
I'd like to have Kennebunk's rights, $1,975. That's... Okay, I will call Director Hill up here to talk to you about contracting versus doing the services in-house.
The new microphone where I don't have to step right up to it?
No.
So there are rumors about how long your presentation is.
I've got like a long and a short version, I guess.
I like the short version. Go.
He's wearing a suit, guys.
Watch out. So the first slide here to show that you, show you that we're not strangers to thinking outside the box. This is a historical photo of Buxton in 1933 when some of the residents couldn't afford to pay their taxes and they had a contractor hire out horse and wagon teams to help rebuild 112. So we can solve a lot of problems here tonight. If we could just get everyone in town with their horse and wagon teams out there, we could save a substantial amount of money this summer on our roadway recon construction. Seeing none in favor?
Or bikes, Matt.
Tell them about the red circle. Oh, the red circle? The, the third guy in line is my great-grandfather, my, yeah, my great-grandfather, Andrew Hill. Resident of Buxton, he, he was able to pay his taxes and then save up enough money that he could buy some land afterwards. 25 cents an acre.
He immigrated from Nova Scotia.
That's right, with his, his four sons and they were all in World War II. So been here a while, been here, thinking outside the box, farmer's mentality is what we call it. How do I advance here? The down button? This one? Okay. All right, so as part of the budget process, I put together that spreadsheet tracking highway division operations. And the advantage of doing that was that I was able to convert that essentially into this comparison of comparing the municipal employees' programs versus contractors. I've got contacts through the construction industry, whether it be local or regionally, that I was able to call in some favors and talk to literal contractors and ask them to get, to get bids on a lot of the services that we currently provide for a line-by-line review of each of the programs that we provide. The numbers on our side represent our proposed, our, our, our budget from last year, which included all of our budgeted costs, our vehicles and equipment, our benefits, our administrative support, plus $750,000 that had been originally proposed in the Equipment Capital Improvement Program. So that's intended to show you like that's, that's the most money that we could put into this plus the 750 that we asked for this year. So there's also a hefty list of disclaimers that come with this presentation. So if we were to contract out services, all those mobilizations are dependent on those contractors' respective schedules and abilities to perform work as desired. If we require timely response, liquidated damages are recommended to be included each contract, which also typically drive up the price of said services. The second one is that administration would need a corresponding increase in management to oversee multiple concurrent contractor operations. Think of the more contractors you have working independently, the more communication you have to do, the more oversight you need to make sure that they're doing the right thing at the right time. There's no after-hour emergency callouts that are, would be covered in this. Those would significantly increase these estimated costs according to our... According to our insurer, Michael Mayot, who's the underwriting manager for MMA, an increase in claims, if those contractors don't respond in time, will negatively affect the city's experience modifier. The increase in claims may increase the city's cost for said insurance. Larger cities typically have too many moving parts to privatize all services. And with more privatization, there's a need for tighter control, as I previously mentioned. And according to Michael, a large amount of privatization often leads to unintended consequences. Disclaimer number five, not all contractors are eligible to work for the city. If you think you've got somebody local, say a one-person show that might want to work for the city, oftentimes we try to contract with them, and they don't have the proper insurance that they're carrying, including workers' compensation. You can go to the state to get a waiver of workers' compensation, but at the top of the form, it says in big bold, there's a ten thousand dollar fine for filling this form out wrong. And if you do so, we're gonna nab you. So a lot of those smaller contractors cordially bow out of the process at that point. Next disclaimer, hiring and retention have been dramatically improved since the recent contract negotiations. They've updated employee salaries to be competitive with our surrounding municipalities. And just kind of like a word of caution, continuous discussion of department downsizing does negatively affect our morale and employment at the Public Works Department. And that's just, is what it is. It's not meant to be, I'm just saying that everybody at the Public Works knows, you know, I'm up here today. So while the department does have a mutual aid agreement with surrounding municipalities, the big storms tend to affect all of our neighbors. Thus, no mutual aid is typically available. Snowstorms, wind events, flooding events typically affect region, us regionally. So with other departments, they can call in for mutual aid. With us, we need to be sized to handle the work at hand. Next disclaimer is the FEMA reimbursement process will work differently with contracted labor. Public Works currently gets reimbursed for our burdened hourly, employees' rates, equipment and materials. Contracted services would only be paid up to the FEMA reimbursement rates, even if the cost of the city more to pay those contractors. So I'm gonna refer to one in here tonight where we're getting full reimbursement for some of our costs from the April fourth storm. If that was all contracted labor, we might get only reimbursed a portion of our costs. And then last is the Public Works Union Contractor requires a city to reopen contract negotiations relative to the impact of city contracting outwork, as it may apply to any employees. Okay, sorry about that disclaimer's list. So the spreadsheet that you see before you is that modified operations tracking spreadsheet that I mentioned that we done as part of the budget process. And the first slide here is jumping right to conclusions. As the city of Sanford, through management of public workforce's crew, equipment and facilities, deliver services to the taxpayer at roughly half the cost of contracted services. And the quote underneath I included there refers to, you know, my position. In order for something to be managed, it has to be measured. It has to be able to be measured. So in order to effectively manage the department, we have to manage, we have to be able to measure everyone's productivity. So you can see down here, each on the left-hand side of the page is all of our core programs. Our targeted hours is the next column. And then our program cost to the city at the bottom is around four million dollars. That includes the seven hundred and fifty thousand for the capital improvement for the equipment. Our annual escalator on that is four percent fixed through the union contract. The next column over is the total program hours. So say, street sweeping is only one employee, their hours is seven hundred and seventy-four hours per year. Because it's only one employee, the whole program is seven hundred and seventy-four hours a year. But if you do the math, as far as the column on the far right, you divide out the number of hours that employees spend into the number of days it takes them, and you get the total program hours. Next is the contracted unit costs that I researched with contractors over the phone, by email, called in some favors. And then I created a calculation, potential cost contracted through the city, through the number of program hours times the rate, and then the source of the quote, mostly contractors. So the contractor cost for that four million dollars in services was on the order of seven point seven million. And the average consumer price index escalator on that, in comparison to the four percent fixed with the union, is four point two three percent, which is the five-year average. All right, so if you'd like?
Done.
We've got streets, I've got, I've got, I've got items in here on all these. You know, if you wouldn't mind indulging me just a little bit, the tree trimming and cutting, I spent hours on this one scratching my head, because it came out that the contractor was cheaper. And I just couldn't get my head around it. As it turned out, the hours that we put in in fiscal year twenty-four were about three months long because of the April fourth storm. So the sheet itself was overly burdened with tree trimming hours. And that made the calculation. But basically, in here, I backed out the hundred and thirty thousand we're getting reimbursed by FEMA, which dropped our number considerably, you know, less than the contractor rates. Let's see, other things to note in here, street sign maintenance, this comparison to similar municipalities, gravel road grading, roadside ditching, drainage repairs, roadside mowing. That was another one that we felt was like very competitive initially. The contractor submitted a quote for that was very serious about it. He recently got a contract with Maine DOT. He's mowing with that piece of equipment on the left side of the screen there. And our piece of equipment is on the right. Would anyone like to tell me the difference on those two? It's, the roadside mower gets within eight feet of the road, but the boom flail mower can get all the problem areas behind the guardrail and the vertical trees. So Maine DOT scored that sweet contract with the roadside mower. Unfortunately, they also had to go out and hire a boom flail mower in order to get all the problems they couldn't get with the first pass. So that one wasn't as lucrative as initially thought. Yard maintenance, we crush our own gravel. I talked to you guys a lot about that, looking at a local contractor who could supply similar materials. It's close to a tie there, but not included in comparison is if we were to stop our reusable materials program, what we would do with that material, because it's currently brought to us, and we need to do something with it. If we were to stop all our activities, you'd have a four hundred thousand dollar windfall, because you wouldn't have to do preventive maintenance on any of your equipment anymore. So that looks attractive at first, but, you know, the numbers bear out that it's a cost worth having. And then the storm response. So this is, this is one, you may have heard of this a little bit, this winter, we had our current contractor who's doing the snow plowing take on three additional routes. He subcontracted that workout. He says he won't do it again. He's not happy with the subcontractor. The subcontractor's taken out twenty-one mailboxes. I brought some of those complaints here with me tonight, if you'd like to read some of them, but eight of them are on one street. The contractor has otherwise been doing a very good job for the city, and we have had a good record of performance with him, but we wouldn't want to do it again. And then there's the miscellaneous complaints that, there's really no one to do miscellaneous complaints. They would have to have our skill set and our equipment base. And so I've kind of conservatively put a overhead rate of a hundred and fifty percent on that to say that, you know, that's about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars savings for the city. So any questions or discussion on that? Because I'd be very happy to go back into it and talk about it line by line. I really feel, it was a good exercise for me, just to see, and it brought.
I believe your colleagues are quite happy, but you're all original.
It's, it's a, it's a good feeling to know that. And to be very honest with you, our department takes pride in bringing good value and good cost to the city. They feel like they do a better job than a contractor could. And when something does get contracted out, they're always saying like, the city's wasting money, or the city's spending too much money, or this or that. I work with a whole bunch of fiscal conservatives, like they, they do not like waste, you know? I've never been to a Public Works or a public employee break room that didn't have a coverage board before I started in Sanford. Like, we're work. We do hard work. So I'm gonna lay it out there as our crew comes through.
Any questions, Anne?
First, amazing presentation. And we'll get a copy of it, I assume, to read in.
Well, you have to get all the other slides.
Well, the full presentation. I know, I really do. And I will read it. And just to be clear, although I hear it was a good, you know, project, I was really looking at, or wanting to ask a question about the storm response. And in particular, the reason, just so you know, Matt, why I asked that question, was because we experienced some savings this year in our budget by shifting, or by, we had unfilled positions prior to the changes that we've made, which have been really positive with our hiring. And we used those funds and had some savings by shifting to contract services for this one year for the person that won't do it in the future, which is kind of a unique situation, right? So the reason I asked the question, just so you know, was not that I doubt the value of our Public Works Department, but that we incurred some savings in that one line. And I was curious about if that was something potentially that could be ongoing. It appears the answer is no. But anyway, just so you know, I just wanted to say that. And thank you so much for this presentation.
Thank you. The city manager and I have been working on, really, before kind of this last round, when we've had such, you know, dreadful time with our economic climate of, we intended to kind of expand our snowplow services and take back those contracted routes. Unfortunately, kind of the market went the other direction at just the wrong time. So we're headed back, I think, now in the right direction. We're trying to get geared up so we can do that. This contractor who we've got plowing for us now, has been doing a great job. I don't know if they're gonna be interested in doing it ten years from now. Like, we, you know, if we can do it at a better and more cost-effective service, why shouldn't we? You know, we should take pride in that.
Jonathan?
So a couple of quick questions and comments. I think you kind of touched on it. I know we did contract out for like the Midtown Mall, snow plowing contract, just due to some staffing issues, I believe. And then, so I'm hoping we can change that in the future, if, you know, these savings are something we can realize. I have had some feedback on plowing this year, and I don't know if it's your crew or if it's contractors, but like, some of the street, the side streets especially, haven't been opened up very well. Or there's this huge swath where somebody's gotta do their driveway a couple of different times when they come back through, if they come back through. So just some feedback I've been hearing. But I think overall, you guys have done a great job. It's, you know, some of the storms have been really tough, where we've had just really heavy snowfall, or it's been kind of a weird mix. So thank you for all the hard work that you guys do.
Thank you.
Can I drill down on the streets?
Yeah, yeah. So the parking lot. So we've, we've got several different types of contracts with parking lots. So the Midtown Mall parking lot has been kind of an informalized contract for years with one vendor who's, who's been doing the work without, you know, a lot of issues. He is committed to doing that for the foreseeable future until he decides to retire, which is, I'm not sure when. We also brought in another contractor to do some of the other municipal lots. I think he's had some good success, because he's very like dedicated to those lots, taking on that work. Regarding the side streets, we got a formal complaint in writing from a prominent landowner who owned several properties throughout town. He listed four streets in particular, and this was addressed at the Public Safety Subcommittee today. We were able to look in our records as far as those streets and the parking ban violations. And for each of those four streets, there were numerous parking ban violations, where our trucks are instructed not to be sent down narrow streets that have parking ban violations, because they will not fit, and they will scrape the side of that car, or they will take out a utility pole on the way. So this landlord was complaining about like timely service. We shot right back, saying like, if, we will do it timely if the street is clear. But if the street's not clear, we can't go down it. And that means we have to go to the next part of our route. So happy to share more of that information.
Thank you for clarifying that.
And Jonathan, that was one of the things, I sent you guys a text message, saying somebody called me and was very rude on the phone, and that's the area that they were in. So yeah, they knew better.
Yeah, I've gotten complaints from just other, other people. I don't think it was the same person, but just, just general cleaning up timeframes, but.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'd like to reiterate that, I think the strength of where the department is currently. So when I first started here, Charlie and Greason was our Public Works Director, and they were all things to all people. In other words, they were doing street reconstruction, street maintenance, trying to maintain, trying to maintain a fleet of equipment to accomplish all of that. CIP was underfunded as far as the capital input in there. That's the starting point. Fast forward to today, the department has remade itself. They are not all things to all people. There's obvious and well-proven areas that is more cost-effective to go to your large contractors for that major street reconstruction, like we've seen the success on River Street, the major paving work and all that sort of deal. Go to those vendors that have that type of equipment, in a close proximity, can mobilize here efficiently, get the work done timely and with quality, good quality assurance in there. That's not our business. Our department is focused on those elements that it's very difficult to contract for, when you need something small done over here, something large done over there, something small here, something after hours, something that nobody ever heard of before is over here. That's what our department is geared for, right? Doing that, that response, and doing it well. And they're focused on maintenance, the maintenance side of our streets, not the reconstruction, but the maintenance. That's what we can do efficiently. That's the fleet of equipment that we can better capitalize and maintain and put out there on the road. And our staff does an exceptional job of that. So I think that really plays into, you know, the overall cost of doing it ourselves versus contracting. But there are other obvious areas where it is more cost-effective for us to go out in contract, such as reconstruction.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
So this is a budget process, and a question was asked about salt. And Councilman Hitchcock, thank you for asking the question. Just before I kind of get to the answer here, I want to go through the Safe Salt, Sustainable Salt Storage Manual that I hadn't read before. But you made me kind of reconsider what we've been doing. So I just want to come back to you with like what I found on research. And then I want to acknowledge that it was a good question. So the Safe and Sustainable Salt Storage Handbook, Good Salt Storage Facilities with Adequate Capacity Guarantee sufficient salts available to maintain safety and mobility for motorists, emergency vehicles and commercial vehicles. Because salt is so vital, proper storage must be provided to protect it from the elements and to protect the environment. It's recommended that a one-year supply of salt is properly stored to prevent shortages, which will affect safety and commerce. So on recommendations on how much salt is needed in a winter, they recommend not reducing last winters, not reducing your salt storage based on last winter's figure, because you hope next winter will be milder. Understand the supply impact from the previous winter. Harsh, long winters deplete storage and affect salt demand for the following winter regionally. Be sure to take into account new mileage added to your road or street system, and improve your winter operations and maintenance. Going straight salty, including applied liquids or pre-wet solids, or adding more salt routes can substantially influence our consumption while also providing a sustained level of service. So ultimately, agencies that plan ahead and have abundant storage capacity have an advantage. So that's the intent of our salt storage facility. They recommend storage capacity for a hundred percent of our average winter needs can help eliminate the need for delivery during critical storm periods, and will ensure that salt is available when needed. We don't have that right now, but we do have a good amount. So basically, what it recommended is that the salt should, salt needs should be based on a five- or 10-year average of consumption, which we hadn't done before. We had been doing a kind of a conservative buildup. So I'm gonna own that. Our five-year average was thirty-seven hundred tons. Our 10-year average was forty-four hundred tons. We had proposed to purchase six thousand tons, which was more than the five- or 10-year average. So based on that above guidance, we're revising our recommendation, reducing the amount of salt programmed to fourteen hundred tons. Sorry, forty-five, that's a little typo on there. Forty-four hundred tons, so that's a budget saving, sorry, it's a reduction of fourteen hundred tons. So savings of a hundred and twenty-four thousand and change to the budget. And that's, little asterix on there, the next year's salt prices will be available in May or June of this year. And that our consumption will be determined based on the public need. That's right.
Okay, calm down, you two.
Now, thank you for looking into that. And your last thing I want to do is put us at a risk of losing salt, because that's.
you looking into that, getting some guidance on that, and now we have, you know, I think everyone can be happy with that. So, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Matt, where do we get our salt from?
So, we historically have had two bids. One is from, like, the Planning and Development Commission, the other one is state bid. So, we try to go with the lower of those two, and typically, the salt either comes out of Portsmouth or, I think, Portland. So, it's, it's really dependent on which of the bids we're going with in that given year, and then which one they decide to haul out of.
Okay, thank you. I love that huge salt thing in Portsmouth. It's, like, huge. It's, like, weird. Isn't it amazing? Jonathan?
So, a quick question. What, what is our current storage capacity in tons?
That is a great question. I am not sure.
Okay, I guess, so, a follow-up question would be, if on average, we're using, say, the 10-year average is roughly 4,500 tons, do we have any plans to build additional enough storage so that we can store a year's worth of material?
The cost of buildings, I've been looking into the cost of buildings to try to get some of our equipment, like, out from under the sun. Just the cost of building for the storage facility for equipment was on the order of, like, $400,000. So, I think I submitted it one year under, like, Facility CIP, but I have not submitted it since because I just didn't think it was tenable. I think we're basically out of room on our current parcel. So, even if we were to get approved for, like, such a building, I'm not sure where we would put it.
Okay.
I've got some long-range plans, but I'm not ready to share them.
Yeah, I think it would be good to...
Jonathan has a backyard.
It's not that big. No, but I think if we, you know, if, if we could get enough storage, that we have at least a, a minimum somewhere, then that kind of keeps us from having to buy at high times to fill in that gap, whatever's needed in the middle of the season.
Let's build a couple of fire stations, and I'll be right on the tails of that.
And then I had one follow-up question. I noticed that we've, it seemed to have switched from, we were using, like, a brine solution for a while, I think, to back to salt. Is there something that was driving that? We've been finding that it wasn't effective, or, or is there some other thing driving that?
That was a mistake. One of our supervisors recommended that we get away from the solution, and I did not have enough experience to say no, and I should have said no. Steve immediately knew that's a no, and we reversed course, but once you, once we tore the equipment apart, it was a little too late. So, it took us about a year to recover, but we're, we're back to pre-wetting.
So, we're back to a brine solution?
Yeah, we're not spraying a brine solution on the pavement. We are pre-wetting the salt as it's spun out of the, the salter.
Oh, okay.
Wet salting with magnesium chloride. Salt effectively stops its effectiveness at 20 degrees. After that, it's ineffective. Put it out there, but it doesn't do you any good. Magnesium chloride, minus 30.
Okay.
So, it reduces the amount of tonnage of salt that you put out there. It increases its effectiveness, and it leaves a residual on the road. So, you'll know, when, when, once they've gone out and done a couple of applications for the year, you're going to have a little scud of snow and stuff like that. They might forget, go out and hit some intersections, but most of the roadways are, take care of themselves for a smaller amount of snow. That also helps prevent the snow from sticking down at the start of the storm until they get out there and start hitting it. So, it's much more, much more effective.
Okay, and does that impact this, what we would consider an average for the 4,500 tons?
No.
No, okay.
And as far as the salt, salt shed storage capacity, we have adequate capacity to carries through a series of major events. You're not going to buy, buy at the higher, the low, the bids come in for the year. So, you're buying at that same price for that, that 12-month duration. So, if you get a, you have to buy it in January versus March versus June, you're picking it at the same price.
Okay.
The, the important part is to have storage enough and watch your inventory so that you, if you get caught, like, three, four back-to-back storms, that you've got that supply there. Because when we get hit with those four storms, everybody gets hit with four storms, you call in for delivery, there's only so many trucks to deliver, and it's a battle as to who gets, gets what for supply.
Okay, so, us not using a ton of salt this year, perhaps, is, is maybe not as impactful as we think it might be?
With, with those storms that kind of, like, jumped on us in the second half of the season, our, our use is back up.
Is it back up, okay.
I, I don't know where the final numbers will fall, but it's certainly, we had a very mild...
Imagine if we had another April storm at this point from last year, so...
Oh, I'm sure we'll have some, I'm sure we'll have some more. I was just wondering, you know, if we were still three-quarters full or whatnot from the season, so, thank you.
Really, la- last year was the, was the highest abnormal year. We had the lowest utilization in, in a long period of time. I think, I can think back to a couple of years before that, conference with, with Pete Smith, it's early in the year, never going to make it, we're not going to make it, we're not going to make it, we're not going to make it. Hey, it averages out. And then it tapered off, right? You've seen other times where, oh, we're doing fantastic, we've got all kinds of inventory. Uh-oh, it all hits in the spring storm, so it's just, yeah.
Well, it's heavy, they're wet, they're crappy.
The light icing and stuff like that, that's as costly as a major snowstorm to treat that, that ice. The ice takes more, more product than snow does.
I know.
So, just one last follow-up question, sorry. If, say, we budget for 6,000 tons, which I guess was, we're probably changing, but, and we bid, get a quote from whoever the salt supplier is, are we, do we have to take delivery of all that, or if we don't use it all, do we just, it just rolls kind of back into the budget again?
Right, unless we call and have it delivered, it won't be consumed. So, it's not, if we budget for 6,000 tons, we don't spend until we call for the salt to be delivered.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so, we're not committed to a certain number of tons in that purchase. They do a regional bid for the product, you get a price. They use our estimated number of tons that we're going to be using to, to get the, the bulk numbers in there.
All right, Ann?
And would it impact the budget projection, Matt, if we purchased some pet-friendly salt, that my pugs don't get hurt when they're walking? Because it's real problematic for us.
I think they only sell that in a smaller container. They don't sell that by the truckload, unfortunately.
I thought we were trying to be a pet-friendly town.
Any other questions?
My pugs get nailed anything over three inches, they're just...
I'm sorry about all the pug talk.
I am a pug owner.
Steve, do you actually consider those a dog?
No, he doesn't, no.
No comment. We, we also have a Great Dane to make up for it.
Okay, you're forgiven, then.
Term used as wannabe dogs.
Okay, I think we're set with that. Thank you. I can't wait to see all the 40-something other slides that you've created.
Comes to my mind, that dog don't hunt, right? That's, that's the same. So, that was the supplemental information that we had for you tonight. Yes, right? Okay, I'm getting a head nod, so I'm, I'm on track. What I'd like to do now is go back over briefly how we're getting, getting to the point of the budget here tonight. Should we open here? Okay. Put that back up on the screen for us, Ben? Hmm, that's not working. And just, if you can just, there, just turn me off so we can have all the screen for the, for the spreadsheet, please. On, on this slide, what I'm trying to illustrate here is the first draft that was presented to the council the end of January. Administratively, working through the process, from what the departments presented to, to us initially, working through that process, we made adjustments, increases and decreases that amounted to a decrease of $415,002. And that was the starting point that we presented to the city council in January, okay? And then, prior to the February 20th, I thought it was February 25th workshop, the 24th or the 25th, further administrative amendments were, were made. We got increased revenue from the York County Dispatch Center. We reduced our revenue on our Pay As You Throw program because the tonnage, the tonnage is down overall. We saw a net, a net increase of $4,137 in revenue. We adjusted expenses, $48,000 reduction in our health insurance line. We had budgeted 10% increase for the second six months of the cycle. We brought that back to the 7% known increase, saving $48,000. We had to put in an increase of $79,453 for the public, the fire hydrants pursuant to the PUC, they're going up one and a half percent per year on us until we get to 27%. We had to put in a $1,000 increase for the airport utility, again, for a hydrant that's in there. We reduced the SRCC, the dispatch center, overtime to $350,000, so reduced it by $77,700. And then, adjusted down the expense on the environmental services because the tonnage is down as well. So, change in revenue, change in expense, that produced a savings of $59,997. In the capital program, we had to put in additional $5,944 in because we got the final quote on the fire department radio lease. We had to add $19,000 for the Shapley Dam, Acton Shapley Dam Coalition, for the dam work that we anticipate to do, do all of the dams. And then we reduce, removed $71,150 from the Oakdale Cemetery projects. We kept the first project in there, $25,000 and change, for the masonry work for the retention pond and such. And then we had the offsetting revenue in the perpetual care fund that offsets that. So, we were able to take a $71,000 reduction. So, that gave us a net decrease of 4, additional $46,206 on the, the, yeah, the CIP for the Oakdale Cemetery. So, that series produced $110,340 worth of reductions. So, $525,342 of reductions at the administrative level. That produced, in the blue, this, this budget projection at that, at that point in time. So, we went from around 11, 11.6% down to 11.10%. Excuse me. Year-over-year increase in net taxation of $2281,564. That's where the council started on February 25th. On February 25th, the council, again, started, started with the blue. They reinstalled one of the two MDEA officers back to MDEA to gain that revenue back. They adjusted the general assistance revenue, they decreased that by $140,000, but they took a, the decrease in expense on the other side. They put 10% increase in the funding for $39,717 for the memorial, Good Old Memorial Library, we used to say Memorial Gym. Springville Library got a 10% increase as well, at $16,480. The general assistance for GA gross expenditures was reduced by $200,000. And the fire department radio maintenance line was, was left untouched. Other adjustments in there from that list of, of amendments was the fleet management program and public works was reduced by $250,000, back to its current $500,000 level. And the road, reduced the roadway infrastructure investment by keep, keeping that at $3 million. We had started at $3, $3250,000. That was reduced by the 250 to keep it at $3 million again this year, retained the half million of offsetting revenue for that CIP element. The Memorial Gym basketball court, the refinishing there, $39,847, was up for consideration for removal. It was not removed in this derivation, and it's back on the list here as an offset, though. Removed the fire department command vehicle, the two-year piece, was decided to leave the command vehicle in there, but we had not accounted for the $12,000 anticipated purchase slash trade. So, they, you took that element as well. So, that produced a net reduction to taxation of $628,766.50. That brings us over to the action of the green, green's always the good. So, it took, took the net impact of taxation from $2281,000 down to $1640,000, or 7.98%. So, that's tonight's starting point. Finance then produced this, this amendment sheet that you're seeing for the first time. In the blue, we've carried forward the municipal impact, the 1.6 million or 7.98%. And then we have the following items in there that's been based upon input that the council has given over the last three work sessions, as well as the supplemental information that, that you had presented for you tonight. I can propose to you to make a series, oop, I didn't even bring that up, I'll have to do it by memory. I can propose to you to do a series of amendments in here that will reduce your bottom line from the 1.6 million and 7.98% down to a flat 6%. That would do, by my view, no harm to municipal operations, but get the council far closer to where they would like to see the, the municipal budget. So, I'll, I'll go about that task in there. You have talked about the parks and recreation fees for the summer programming. My feedback from that, I'm hearing you'd like to leave that alone for the year. That wa, that was our recommendation coming in tonight as well. All right. Next, we had talked about this in the work session, is that the Pay As You Throw program currently is booked to increase by $1 per sleeve. We're proposing to take that to another dollar, so it would go $2 this year per sleeve, so we'll take it from 16 to 18 dollars. That produces an additional $74,000 in revenue.
Steve, can you comment on the total cost of the trash removal that this kind of covers? I know the bags only cover a portion of it, and then some of it's covered by taxation.
Leave you with a deficiency of $475,000.
I'm sorry?
It would leave you with a deficiency of $475,000 for the services. So, you're still going to be raising from, from taxation. Additional funds needed to support the, the solid waste and recycling collection and processing.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Bob?
And I think, Steve, can you, as well as your memory can serve you, we are still even at $18 lower than most communities around here. So, I mean, I can hear the people ripping their hair out at home right now, watching this, but still a good deal, still lower than what other communities are charging. You can just say, I'm right, or whatever.
Yes, no, no, that, that's accurate information, that's correct.
Yeah, absolutely.
If they want to see the, you know, the shiny object on the other side, a year from now, we may not have Pay As You Throw bags as we know it. We're in the process of, of getting proposals from other, from vendors for what our next curbside collection and pickup program will look like.
So, I, for folks that are watching from home, I think the reminder is that it's, it's like a use tax, right? You're, you're paying what you're using as opposed to just paying it throughout the community based on owning property here. And then, my only hesitation, frankly, is that we will get more kickback on this than we will probably the entire budget. So, you know what I mean? But I think it's partially a lack of understanding about how it works, and, and the comment of, my taxes went up and the orange bags went up. So, we just have to be well, able to inform people well about why that is, and continue those conversations with our community members.
And they have to understand, by doing this, their taxes are going down. So, I'm not paying for Ann's trash, I'm not paying for Bob's trash, I'm paying for my trash, so, which is reasonable. So, I, for one, would be in favor of taking the $74,000, in, increasing the cost of the bags. Pete?
I'm in favor of that as well. I'm not in favor of raising...
I'm not in favor of raising property taxes or business taxes. So, I think this is the safest and fairest way to go.
Everybody else, any, let's just have a show of hands for those people who are in favor of this, would be something we're willing to pass. All right, thank you. So, you've got your answer to that? The next one?
So, again, the shiny object on the hill is everything. Everything we knew about solid waste and recycling is, has changed between, you know, this year and next. So, the solid waste committee met again today. We finally have resolved our issues with the jointure agreement so that I can bring all of the documents forward to the city council for this next council meeting. We're asking for your authorization to sign the third-year agreement and contract with EcoMaine for our solid waste and recyclables. We'll have, we'll have a home for the next 30 years and have a voting seat at the table as to how all of that is managed.
Excellent.
So, that's a very favorable change. The other piece, Matt Hill presented today on the RFP going out to a minimum of three vendors and proposing, letting them propose back to one of three and/or more program designs as to how they would achieve curbside collection for solid waste and recyclables here in our community. And at least one of those proposals proposes no orange bags at all. You're still going to need them for some applications, but the average homeowner would not have to buy orange bags anymore. They would get billed quarterly for the curbside collection and pickup as opposed to going to the grocery store and buying orange bags. And they would have two totes, one for solid waste and one for recyclables. It would be provided as part of the program.
Excellent.
All right.
All right. Pete?
Steve, the amount of hours that you and Matt Hill put in, do you guys want to elaborate on that? It's tremendous amount of time and now you're taking care of the city for the next 30 years. I just don't want that to go without being said.
It's been a good regionalized effort. So, I want to give credit to Dwayne Warren in North Burrowick, the manager in North Burrowick. If anybody's passionate about trash, Dwayne Warren is passionate about trash. He knows the industry. So, he led the charge in the last, the last round almost 15 years ago when we had to negotiate when Casella bought out Merck. He and Barry Tibbetts were leading the charge there. I was new to the area. He led the charge again on this, this, did the heavy lift for us, negotiated, we negotiated with multiple entities, came down to the collective decision to go with EcoMaine. Sanford's a bit of a standout in that. So, you'll see that at the council meeting on Tuesday, well, you've seen it already. Sanford's a bit of a standout, we're a big player coming into that. And some of the difficulty was they didn't know exactly how to treat us. We're going to be treated a little bit different than the smaller players coming in, but that's okay. We've got a really good deal. So, we'll leave it at that until Tuesday, so. A lot of hours, but.
Thanks again.
See how short my answer was than Matt Hill? That would be 50 slides, at least. Fifty, 50 slides, yeah.
We'll never have you two doing a big project together. Yeah, you're right. Are we all set with that now? All right.
The next item up for consideration, this is a heavy lift. This was done last year. We have the same list, I've got, I've got that in here. It would be, again, a year-over-year 10% increase in the fee schedule. We know that when we increased that last year by 10%, we were still low in comparison to the surrounding region, but the tool is built. Ronnie built all of the tooling last year. Probably was a little bit upset that it wasn't just in one section of our charter, I mean, our ordinances, it's scattered, right? It's everywhere, but nonetheless, the tooling is built there. So, it looks predominantly at the fees that are for those services. People come in and get permits, building permits, demo permits, electrical inspections, all of those type of elements in here. We would anticipate that if you choose to do, take that 10% increase again this year, that would produce an additional $158,000.
Steve, does some of that permit money go to the state?
This wouldn't count the state portion of that.
Okay, I just thought I'd check.
The municipality would retain.
All right.
A lot of the licenses have a state component and the local component. This is, would be what we retain.
Good. Moira?
So, one of the things I like about this is, for the most part, fees are a one-time grab. Like, a lot of people don't use a lot of the fees regularly. I would say, like, the things you consider are, "Are you okay with the rental housing fee going up?" Because that is a regular thing. I kind of am because we're really getting some good work done with that money. So, I'm, I don't mind raising the fees. I know it seems disingenuous, but we're still lower than everybody else. It's been a slow progression of raising fees and it's a different way of paying for the services we provide, so I just wanted to mention that. Oh, I had a question on one of them, but you took it away.
Oh.
I don't remember what it was, though, now.
If you think about it.
It's like he took it away just when I was like, I had a quick question, quick question. Now, I'm not going to find it.
We'll go to Pete.
Yeah, and regardless, I think, I think it's reasonable.
Yeah, I think the raising the fees are reasonable because we're still under other communities' SIs, so it's not like we're price gouging our own citizens, so I'm okay with this.
Thank you. And Moira, you thought of your?
Yes. Does this mean the stuff for the lower section of the dump, too? Like, when you throw a sofa away, 10%? Is that part of it?
This is just permits, isn't it?
I think it is because I think everything went up 10%. All I'm asking you is whatever the fees end up, make sure it rounds to a quarter or a dollar, because that's a pain in the neck for those guys at the dump to have to deal with the little, it should round up or down on the dollar scale or something. That's my thought process.
What if we aspire to, like, we'd like, we'd like to just swipe plastic there, no cash? Card only, swipe your card.
Well, that'd be good.
Card fee is included in that, round up.
I'm just saying that I've been there, well, it's like $5.35 now, and I'm like, "Seriously?" You know, it was, it was kind of, I forget what it was, but it was the very beginning. I just, it's such small numbers and the guys don't really deal with a ton of cash, so.
Okay. Is everybody, oh, Ann?
Well, I just noticed as you scroll down that the recreation fees increased 10% here as well. So, would we want to hold, or recognition that we would hold that as a small adjustment, but from the earlier conversation?
Those recreation fees are different than the, are they different than the, no?
No.
No.
The park fees could go up, I'm fine with that, but, I mean, I'm okay actually raising 10%, but I heard that we, that others prefer not to. And I'm okay with that majority. I'm not going to argue with it.
For some reason, I'd almost rather have the park discussion outside of the budget cycle and really kind of look at the camping situation.
Oh, meaning you want to hold our park fees as well, our rental fees?
I, this, this part of me that thinks we can look at the whole camping situation and come up with a better financial model, maybe.
Oh, sorry, I was talking about our actual park rental fee. Isn't that what that is?
Is that a park rental?
I think those are our park rentals. The 41, make that bigger.
Can we zoom that spreadsheet back out?
I don't think that's campground, sorry, Moira. I think that's parks and rec fees. But, so I just wanted to point that out, it's a small adjustment. And then, so I also had a thought, sorry, can you flip back to your other page, Steve?
Which one?
The actual summary, the cut sheet. Oh, that was my question. So, this is headed in the wrong direction, right, which is unusual for me, but with the increase to fees of 10%, you know, there has been discussion at workshop level about the need, when we look at type and number in our planning department, this would cover the cost of a planning department staff person, which is raising the majority of those additional fees. And I realize that's not a cut, so it's in the wrong direction. But I just want to point out that there was a lot of talk about, for economic development to continue at its pace and/or increase, at some point, we have to staff up in that department. So, that seems to me like an opportunity, if that was a commitment from the council still, but in the wrong direction.
Okay.
I'm just looking at the blue wedge on the cookie. It was a big wedge. It was a big wedge on that cookie. All right.
Okay. So, are we all in favor of this? The fee, okay. That's a yes.
The next.
Yeah, we're out into a dollar.
Well, we, again, we can do, just go plastic only, done, all right? The next line item is additional use of undesignated fund balance. Administratively, we are recommending a no on that. I think the 1.3, I know we can hold the 1.3 million this year, 1,350,000. I'm very nervous about after this year, being able to hold that number at that same level. Now, if the economy kicks in and, you know, the tariffs and all these other adjustments don't devastate us, well, then, okay. Next year will be, might be a different story, so. All right, so that increases our revenues by 232,000. That's one of the big things that we found most detrimental this year was the, not just flat revenues, but a decrease in our revenues. So, that was significant. All right. Next on here, we have both of the 10% increase for Goodall Memorial Library. We've put that on there, that was a $39,717 increase that was on there pursuant to the conversation that started at the last budget workshop, so it's on here again. Well, it's on here for the first time, so. So, if you choose not to take that as a savings and you keep that 10% increase in there and then follow through with the directors from the council to, you know, hold, hold that funding until they meet the terms and conditions, then we would take nothing on this line right now.
Okay, Pete?
I still feel that until we get a hold, like Moira says, we're going to put it in reserve.
I think that's a regardless now.
Regardless, yeah.
I think the question is, do we do the 10% or we do 15,000 each, as Ann suggested? I think that's really the question.
Yeah, the, I, for the 16 for the library, for the Springville and none right now, flatline them for the, for the, this year, until we find out.
I don't think that's what Moira said.
I know.
I think Moira was going with what Ann said.
Yeah.
I'm thinking, I'm willing to compromise at 15 each. I think we are underfunding libraries overall. Municipalities give a lot more, so doing zero just puts us further behind.
Okay.
On something we should probably be building on because we did 10 years or more of not increasing their funding at all. So, the 15 gives very, it's very little adjustment to Springville, so they're getting practically what they want, right? And the 15 to Goodall is showing them that we're concerned and that we're going to, we're going to give you the same amount and we're going to have further conversation. Regardless, I hope everybody agrees with me, that money doesn't get dispersed until all the other ducks are in a row.
And you're talking about all the money we give to Goodall.
Oh, God, yes.
Not just this.
Oh, yes.
We're going to hold it all.
That's what I think.
I would agree. All right. Ann?
So, that'd be a net adjustment of $26,199.50, it'd be a reduction. I like that approach, having, I actually proposed initially, or Ronnie proposed, I forget, the 10% increase. As I dove into the financials, I feel less certain about that for Goodall, but I don't want to flatline them either because there's recognition that all of our costs have gone up. And I really like the mayor and deputy mayor's approach to escrow account. I think of note, but it doesn't play into the financials, they have been pre-funded $70,000, correct?
Yes.
So, but that doesn't change the overall numbers. It's accounted for in that.
Well, they got, they got funded, it's in this year's, but they got pre-funded from this current year's budget.
So, would it?
So, next, we're talking about holding next year's.
Next year's budget.
So, in July 1st, they will not get their first payment.
Correct.
Unless we have all the ducks in a row.
Right. So, we'll, soon, Moira and I will set up a meeting with Steve and whoever is on their council, and we'll try to put some stuff into place.
We're going to start. And basically, the foundation of what we've mentioned to you.
I like, I like what Moira did and I like what the mayor and Ann did. I still think we shouldn't penalize the Springville and give them their 16. They're going to miss that $1,000. They've been behind ordering books for the past three years that I've been here. So, I don't know if the extra $1,000 would make a difference. I think it will, but that's, I'm just one vote, and if it goes to 15 each, I'm fine.
How about I promise you that I will make a donation for that difference for the rest?
Done. I'm good with Moira, she's going to make a donation, they're good. Thank you.
All right, so is everybody in favor of 15 each and then the escrow for the rest? Okay, everyone?
Yep.
Did you get what we were talking about?
15% in addition. Oh, 15 flat, okay.
Thirty total, so he'll make an adjustment of 26,195.50.
Okay, so that still gets us less than the 10%, right?
And Ronnie has the right numbers that are going in there.
It reduces that by $26,195.50.
Okay. Okay, fantastic, that's a go. Next one?
Excuse me. Next, let me zoom in this larger for you. We can look at the, the other graphs later. All right, the next position is to defund the chief mechanics position, and I'm going to request that you not do that. I'm going to request any of these staffing changes that are on here to not make reductions. Currently, that position is unfilled. That was just, it was newly created, just a very short period of time ago. We took one of our three mechanics, negotiated a pay scale for that with the union to create a chief mechanic, so a step above our mechanic twos. The intent of that was that person would be hired, it was a compensation enough to attract somebody, that person would be hired, trained by our garage foreman, who is reasonably expected to retire out in the near term, and then we, that we'd have our succession plan and then reevaluate at that point if you need to hire another mechanic, one or two, into the department. So, currently, we're operating with a garage foreman and two, well, one mechanic one and one mechanic two. So, in lieu of the stockpile, the road salt savings of $124,096, I'd ask you to take those savings and leave the mechanics position alone. Because as we discuss internally, achieving that transition is almost impossible without this position. We have to wait until the garage foreman actually retires. You don't have anybody internally that's likely to step up for that. It's very difficult to fulfill mechanics positions. So, we want to, we've got some ideas on how we're going to get this filled, and we'd like to continue to move forward with it.
And I would have to agree with you, Steve, is being a part of the team and negotiating the contracts and talking to all the gentlemen who were a part of that, I can definitely see where it was needed. By the way, they were a great group of people to work with. I just truly enjoyed their sharing and they were so willing to tell us what was needed and what was not needed. And I felt very comfortable coming out of those talks with them. They were very honest about everything. So, I would say, yes, I would agree with Steve with this one.
I do, too.
Ann?
The question I would ask is, from a timing perspective, if there's agreement that this is a position that's necessary, is it possible that we could look at the timing of hiring? I don't know what the imminence of, and we never know, right, of the imminence of somebody's leaving their employment, but in order to have ample time for training and to be well-positioned, still, is there any flexibility on a start date, pushing out half a year or anything like that potentially?
That's, I mean, that's absolutely your call as a council. The comfort level that I have with our public works is, we know that for a number of years now, any salary lapse is remaining, any of the supply line that's remaining, any of that amount of funding that's remaining in the public works, the council has reassigned that rather than letting that lapse to fund balance. Matt Hill keeps a list of roads that he goes back out and puts that money right into the side streets that aren't as high, aren't as high up on the roadway CIP. So, those side streets get done with that money at year end. So, by reducing that, there's less of a probability that, you know, if it takes us three months into the next fiscal year to get this filled, six months from now, that small amount of savings is not that significant in our budget.
And it's already posted, correct? It's been posted for some time?
Posted, correct.
And typically, spring is a good time to hire people looking for change, so I'd hate to not get somebody.
I find no rhyme or reason to what we're seeing in the marketplace. Some positions, we get just tremendous overwhelming response, and others, it's very difficult.
I'm surprised, too, that we haven't had any bites. I've been talking with HR, I've been talking with my department. Like, I'm at a point where I want to go try to headhunt somebody, like, just go target. Hey, we think you'd be a good fit. I don't know. If we could do that, I need to talk to Stacy and, but.
Absolutely.
It's a good plan. It should work.
Okay. Any other? Any other comments? Jonathan?
Um, I'm okay with, um, leaving this in here. I'm just wondering if we can, are there any other unfilled positions that we could take a second look at? Uh, maybe you don't have that ready for tonight, but, uh, maybe the next session.
We've done very well filling all the positions since the new contract and the new job descriptions. I mean, it's been amazing, remember how like last year we had multiple?
We had 10 to 12, yeah.
Yeah, that's no longer exists. They're filled.
I suspect some of the, a good chunk of the unfilled ones we have are actually costing us in overtime too, so it's kinda, it's.
We have to be careful with that.
Yeah, but I mean, I don't, I can't, I can't think of any that you, cause you gave us a list earlier of what was currently out and it was, you know, communications department, it was police, fire, all of which are costing us overtime. I don't think there were a lot of just jobs that aren't costing us overtime. Stacy knows.
A lot of the positions that even were brought to the council a month ago, um, we've given conditional offers on them. So like the police, those have filled out, we've given conditional offers on them. Uh, we have a few others that we've given conditional offers on and we have a couple others that were ready to give conditional offers on, so.
And they haven't been long-term vacancies now, so it's, yeah, it's, we haven't had a lot of them long-term.
No, the longest term vacancy that we had was the, uh, construction inspector and their jobs filled now and working well for us, so. What I, what I stand before you and, and am nervous about, I look at what's coming in the police department. Lot of retirements, uh, that are there, we've got three, uh, rehires, retired rehires, positions there, they, they may not re-up this year, um, I've got the, they're listing in here. Fire department, reasonably, we can foresee a number of retirements in there as well for long, long-term staffers, um, so that, that dispatch. Yep, so those are very, very difficult positions to be in, so there, there was a York County managers, uh, meeting the, the, this morning by Zoom in between all of the subcommittees. I attended that. They were asking for topics, um, that we, that, that the group could work on, uh, regionally, so I put housing in there, um, federal grants, the uncertainties there was something they wanted, some topics on that. But my, my major focus that I put in there is we need to talk collectively as a region around all of the leapfrogging that's being done in public safety positions. It is killing all levels of operations. You can't afford to operate anymore because it's just this constant jump, 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 jump. So when, when you have a multitude of departments that are down more than 50% and they're just throwing money and not achieving it, but driving the cost up for, for everybody else, it's, it's something that's gonna be addressed.
Okay. We're, we're happy with this and?
Leave it.
Leaving this in and then taking out the salt, is that what you're suggesting?
Yes.
Are we all comfortable with that?
Yes.
I know Nate, you have a passion for the salt pile.
Yeah.
Okay, so those two we're okay with?
Okay, um, the next is to, uh, it was talked about, the professional development and property management, uh, position. I think, I don't need to pull it up now, but I think Eric's, Eric Smalls should be on, on Zoom tonight. We can't train Eric enough, we send him away for more training, so he's, he's out of training right now. Yep, there he is. Hey, Chief?
Hey there.
Uh, the person that's occupying this position right now is going to move back over to patrol, uh, and we want to advertise this position and get it refilled. Uh, we have talked extensively around can the job duties of this position be reassigned elsewhere within the department and such unto that? Um, the, the resounding answer for that is no. From the, from the perspective of that, uh, we had a former deputy chief, uh, that, while he was deputy chief, Tim Stroud, he focused on this, creating the M-LEAP certifications. When he retired, the city hired him as the first in this, in this position and that was his sole focus and, uh, took what, I think almost two, two years, a year and a half, almost two years to, to put all of that in place, so the city has authorized that, authorized the investment in there. It's an enormous lift to maintain the training records, get the records of training in, uh, as far as maintaining our, uh, M-LEAP certification. So our recommendation would not to be, would not to defund this position, but allow us to hire this position back in. This office is gonna fill a slot, um, in our patrol, so that picks up one of the vacancies that we have. And then I've got two other adjustments in here, one under operations and one under capital, that I'd like to talk to you about the overall staffing in the department. So when I, when I launch into that, uh, at, at this juncture, so in our department, oh, thank gosh, I didn't write my notes. So, um, we're, the department is authorized for 43 positions, 43 officers. Out of that, we have 39 currently on the roster, 35 of which are available and we have four that we need to hire. So we're occupying all of our patrol activities with 31 active officers. That are achieving all of the, the operations. So we currently have eight, eight officers that are out of service, uh, either on, uh, injury, uh, or, uh, otherwise assigned, so we're, we're making do with 31 officers. One of the elements that detracts from the remaining 31 officers is we have the Axion, camera, camera, uh, recording systems on. That leap in technology is both a blessing and a curse. So the curse, the blessing is it's absolute protection for our officers. It documents what they're doing and how they're doing it and such unto that. It's great when it comes into the court system, uh, defending cases and such. The downside of that is we haven't purchased all of the technology that goes with the camera system. So right now, and I'll let the chief speak to this, um, the amount of, the inordinate amount of time that our patrol officers spend in burning Blu-ray discs for the mandatory retention requirements of the records. So Chief, if you wanna touch on that?
Sure. Um, the mandatory, it's all different depending on, you know, the, the crime at hand, but in general, on average, we have to maintain these videos for 60 years. And the only way that we can best, uh, right now do that is through Blu-ray. And a Blu-ray disc takes about 45 minutes to burn, so if you can imagine an officer going on one call, you have three or four officers responding to it, they have to download all their videos and one officer has to do that, it takes about 45 minutes. They're doing that about three or four times a night, or I should say, three or four times a shift. So it's a very frustrating, um, thing for the officers to have to remain in the police department to, to do that and it really is cutting down on the hours that they're actually working out, out there on the road. And we need to transition to something else, not really transition, we need to purchase something else to, um, you know, prevent that from happening. What other people around us are doing that have the Axon is purchasing unlimited cloud storage and we looked into that this week, uh, to the cost of that and, um, it's, it's a reasonable cost. What this would do, this would allow us to keep our videos, all of them in cloud, um, for as long as it takes, assuming we never stop using Axon or, you know, we, we couldn't prevent them going out of business, but they're a multi-million dollar company and they own the, um, they own the business for that, that type of thing, so, happening. Um, that is the best solution for us right now. Steve?
So the software is $16,000 annually, so that's where you see a line down here, Axion software for reporting at $16,000. Uh, so my recommendation is you do, do not defund the professional development position, leave, leave that, so we don't further overburden, you know, all of our, uh, majors and, and our DC and, and other staff picking up all, all of those duties. Uh, purchase the software that, that gets rid of that, uh, loss of staff time for the remaining patrol officers. That's gonna be an ongoing cost, uh, going out there. Also related to this dialogue is you'll note a line item down here, 12 rugged laptops for FBI compliance, um, that's a $90,000 lift. So that's newly, uh, known to us. They've looked for grants, they've looked for other options of challenge of chief, of challenged, uh, IT department, hey, can't, there's gotta be some way we can upgrade this equipment. We cannot. They'll no longer support the necessary software that's gonna be running on there, they'll go out of, uh, compliance, meet, meet, uh, what am I saying? When I say the FBI compliance, it's, that's with an M.
Yeah, it's the, it's the Sieges compliance, so the computers have to have a certain amount of technology to protect them, protect all that private information that you can imagine that's run through them. And this is something that got sprung on us just a few weeks ago, um, something that Bill and Dan discovered. And they did try to, in their credit, find other workarounds for this. Uh, Dan tried to install some different things on the computers and just wasn't able to fix it. So they handed us this $90,000 for these new computers, um, kinda, you know, mid-budget here, so that's why you're getting it so late, or you, you probably would've headed it in the CIP, so. Steve?
Yeah, so because of this federal compliance, I mean, we, we changed, everything in our entire operation has changed. We have to do the dual auth, auth, authenticity as far as signing in. If one of us logs in remotely, oh, wait a minute, is it really you? Yeah, you gotta be cell phone with you and fingerprint and all that, good stuff, so, um, so there, we, we cannot identify a workaround. So let's lump all of this, this together. I would ask that you leave the professional development position alone and not take any defunding cost savings there. The 16,000 and the 90,000, I had lumped that together as a combined expense of 106,000. What I'd ask to do is, in recognition that we know we're going to have, uh, we have current outages and there's more outages to come in the police department, it's gonna be very difficult to fill that entire roster this year. I desperately do not want to lose the authorized number of 43 in the department. But what I would ask for is concurrents that we reassign 106,000 of those, um, unspent wages, those lapsed wages to accomplish the $16,000 purchase for the software and the $90,000 purchase of the, of the rugged laptops. Uh, so that would not impact our budget this year, but I just need authorization to, to do that. 43 positions stay in place, but I'll use the resources from one of those unfilled positions to accomplish this. Another option into that is, uh, the police department is in a very good fiscal position right now. So that, that being said, they may be able to accomplish both of these items at year end, out of this year's budget, and then there would be a no impact to the wage line for the unfilled positions. So that I would offer tho, those tiered, uh, solutions towards accomplishing these two, uh, urgent needs.
Any questions? Yes, Jonathan?
Um, so a quick question around the backup. I thought we were using a cloud already for the, the body cams, but.
We are, we are using the cloud. We just don't have unlimited cloud storage, so we have all the, the different type of, um, calls that we go on set on, uh, different timers for when they may fall off the system, whether that be a week, 30 days or 90 days. And then we do have some stuff that we do keep forever, but it's, uh, far and few in between because we can't really afford to do that with the amount of space that we have right now. Plus, we really can't keep it, you know, 60 years. This is gonna give us the opportunity to keep things in the cloud and just so you understand how it works for everybody, it would be in the cloud, um, storage and rather than anybody pull it off or burn it, the court officer just goes in and she would pull off the, you know, say the video that needs to be sent to the court and just upload it to their cloud system. So it's kind of a seamless transition for us to move our, you know, our information from the PD to the court. But yeah, Jonathan, we did, we do have cloud space right now, we would just be increasing it to unlimited.
Okay, and do we have, um, any sort of a local backup copy?
No, they, they have, um, we don't, but it, we honestly, it wouldn't be needed. They have contingent systems for, I can only imagine what their server room looks like, but, um, it's nothing to worry about.
Okay, and then, um, you mentioned that it's taking a lot of time for the officers to have to burn discs, et cetera. If we had the software, which seems like a good move to do, would that reduce our overtime budget potentially? And is that?
I mean, I can't really quantify that for you, but I would tell you that if a call came in at the end of the night, yes, an officer does have to wait for that all to get done and they have to stay till 1:00 or 2:00 AM on the evening shift, then that certainly that would incur a cost. I think the bigger picture is it's gonna allow the officers to be out there in the streets. The last thing we want is the officers to, um, you know, be in the police station. And honestly, it's, it's a big morale issue too. This is really eating away at the, the core of the agency and they wanna be working, they wanna be out doing police work, not burning discs. So, um, this is, I think another good background piece of information for you is this is, we had an emergency leadership meeting last week about this and this is a decision that was, um, that wasn't made by me alone. An entire leadership group thought this to be probably the most important, um, issue that we need to overcome in the PD right now and that's why we're bringing it to you today.
Thank you, and then I had one last question about the, um, the laptops. Are those laptops that are in the cruisers or are those at the station or where?
No, these are, um, laptops that are in the cruisers.
Okay, thank you.
It's like a tough book, um, semi-permanently mounted in the police car for them to use.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, Nate?
Will the faster upload time for these videos reduce the amount of time that takes me to have to watch all these videos? No, it will not.
No, I don't have a time machine, you're gonna have to still watch them.
Fair enough.
You know what I'm talking about, Nate? It's a lot, it's a lot of watching, that's for sure.
That's for sure. No, I think it makes sense to, um, you know, I think overall, maybe it will hit us this, this year, but I think overall we'll probably see some reductions in overtime and, um, to be able to account for the, uh, you know, ultimately a $16,000 budget and this, uh, item line item, this is fairly minimal, but, um, also I'm very surprised that there are no grants for these lap, these, you know, 12 rugged laptops mandated by the FBI, that there's no federal grant, but I trust that you all, you've, you've all looked for them, but it's just a little dumbfounding to me.
Yeah, I can assure you, that was the first thing that I did was have, um, Mark Dyer try to take a look for those and, uh, we just, we're not successful and we'll continue to look. It's not, you know, we're not gonna turn a blind eye if we see something between now and then. Uh, but like the manager said, I think we can probably get, we can probably definitely get the $16,000 done and get the officers satisfied immediately, if approved by you, tonight in this fiscal year. And, um, the 90, I'll just wait till the end of the year, a little bit more to see what we have available.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? So the question to you right now is do we all agree that the, uh, the package that Steve just delivered, um, we all are in favor of the package?
Yes. Yep, so you, you do, you leave the professional development position in the budget as it is currently, you don't defund that. The 16,000 for the Axion reporting tool and the $90,000 for the, uh, Sieges compliant laptops, again, the $90,000, we'll take two approaches to that. If we can achieve that out of this year's budget at year end, we will. If not, we will reassign resources from one of the 43 officers that will likely not get hired this year and utilize the resources in that regard.
So it's really net zero?
Net zero.
Net zero. Alright, everyone in favor of that? Great, super.
I, I, I would think, no, I, I would think, I, and I'm voting for it, I'm, I'm in favor of all this, but I would think just getting the officers back out on the street for that 45 minutes per shift, whatever the multiplication is, pays for this thing almost by itself and having more time on the streets.
Good thinking, yeah. Alright, moving right along, Steve?
Okay, the next line item is unfunded compensation buyouts, uh, so each year we, we budget $60,000 to put towards that, so that covers when you have long-term, longtime employees, they retire out, uh, there's unpaid compensation, there's benefits there that they're due. Sometimes departments can absorb that if it's one and it's not significant, but some, uh, we budget this amount to help offset those large retirements. Uh, you could have one retirement that takes almost half of that, right? And when you have a, like in the police department, you get salary lapse, you get salary lapse, you get salary lapse and then four retirements, a lot of that salary lapse disappears and it's paid out for unfunded compensation. So, uh, in, in communication with, with the finance department, they feel that we can take this savings this year, uh, and absorb that within the departments, uh, you know, it'd be part of that transfer. that transfer that we see in the 2% that we can move internally, but we can absorb that and take the savings accordingly.
Okay. Ann?
Does that come out of the sick pay line that's in each department then? Because that was one of my questions that, about the sick pay.
Yep.
Thank you.
That's why you see those extreme fluctuations in there.
Any other questions? All right, show of hands, those are okay with this? Thank you, keep going.
Okay, Lafayette, Carrying Hospital Lafayette, the 53,207 is the number that's represented to us from the school department, is what they had in their budget. They obviously have removed that, we've talked about that. I would recommend not putting that into our budget this year, but going with the goal of trying to sell that before heating season kicks in. If not, we'll carry that with the council's concurrence, we'll carry that, we'll pay for that out of undesignated and then reimburse the city upon sale.
I agree.
Everyone okay with that? All right, good.
Okay, the next one is probably the largest conversation on here, so this would be the addition of a second deputy assessor. The assessing department, when you go back in the history of that, has been understaffed for literally decades. For decades, we had a part-time lead assessor, George Green. We shared that position with the town of Old Orchard Beach. He was actually an employee of Old Orchard Beach. We contracted half of his time here for the city. He was over here two, to, sometimes as much as three days per week. We have a deputy assessor full-time and we have a full-time administrator. So for a municipality our size, we should have been staffed at three plus an administrative assistant all of these years. We have not. They have made do over the years with that staffing level and our assessing records now reflect that. So the council has been in conversation with what that succession plan looks like in the assessing department, how we attract, how we retain, and how we build that department back up. Just recently, the city advertised for the assessing position in that department, we had two applications. Two, so, and one of which was not qualified. So we have extended an offer pursuant to these actions tonight, we've extended an offer to an individual certified main assessor, lives here in our community, that would come in and serve as a second deputy assessor in there. We know that the remaining staff in there, long-time dedicated staff but are close to retirement as well, due to their, they're able to retire and by their age as well. So we desperately need staffing in there. Also, part of this plan is to start preparing the records, getting them in a better state in preparation for a revaluation two to three years out. That's a heavy lift, cannot be accomplished with the current requisite type and number of staff that we have in there. This would be the first step. The $88,279 represents the labor cost of that, it's not fully burdened, we're going to absorb the, whatever benefit package is selected by this individual, we're going to absorb that under our insurances and benefits department, and the reason we believe that we can do that is because of the number of outages that will churn through our organization over this next year. So we're requesting the additional cost of $88,279 to accomplish that, increase in that department in the succession plan.
Any questions?
Is it...
I would make a strong recommendation to not take that to part-time, to leave that position as is.
Any questions?
Just for clarification, we're going to do all this and the conversation doesn't have to end, right?
Correct.
So that's the important thing to remember.
Yeah. All those, we're leaving this?
So far.
So far, okay. As we see the figures at the end, then we can decide.
What we do see, and I had conversations on this again this morning, what we do, we do see a rearrangement of the, you heard me say type and number, right? We believe that in the future, post-retirement, there's a different blend and makeup, once we get ourselves closer to revale and especially after revale, that can reduce overall cost in the department, you know, with a lister, a listing position as opposed to maintaining two deputy assessors. So that need will change over time and will produce some savings in the future.
Hey, Steve, sorry to interrupt, but are you controlling the screen or is it the person in the back?
Ben.
Can we, can we keep it at full screen on the spreadsheet? Because it's really not readable when it's shrunk down. Thank you.
Okay, so I've put that in. The Axion, the $16,000, we've covered that, we've got a multitude of options. I strongly make a recommendation at this juncture in time to leave that admin position at full-time and make no change there. At time of retirement, we'll make changes at that point going forward. Then, we move all the way down to the capital program. We put on the sheet and are making a recommendation to put an offset of $39,847 that would pay for the CIP line item to refinish the Memorial Gym floor. That would be taken wholly out of Parks and Recreation special revenues. They have less than that in there currently, but they will be amassing more in the near future when the spring programs start, they'll be able to cover that under special revenues.
Did anyone have a question on that? Okay. Bob?
They're putting in another basketball, or they're leaving the wooden floor, or is there a different flooring material going to go in?
They're going to refinish the existing wooden floor. The former school department director, Gordy Salz, there we go. Names, ask me a number, I'll tell you a number, but boy, ask me a name, man. Yeah, he says that there's one more, there's at least one more finishing on that, so if they can, they can sand it, finish it, then we could have a lot of years of use out of that court yet.
Yeah, yeah, just wondering, yep.
Jonathan?
So I'm okay with this because it needs to be finished. I know we did talk about looking at the fees for Memorial Gym at some point.
We had a conversation.
Oh, we did, okay. All right, so I was just wondering if we can maybe make an estimate of what we think we might have coming in from that and roll that in here somewhere? I know that might be a little hard to predict, but maybe we can try to offset some of that with this.
One of the, so we talked about that fee schedule this morning, you know, the cleaning fee only, the reduced fee of 50%, the fees for the full cost with gymnasium resident versus non-residents, we had all of that dialogue and made some amendments there this morning. The other aspect is, by getting the floor refinished, Brady's been contacted by York County Community College, they'd like to utilize the Memorial Gym for their volleyball program. That would be a great revenue producer for us and good, good level of activity to have there, so that would become their home court.
Would they bring their own nets for that, or is that something we'd have to invest in?
They're going to provide some of their own equipment. Like for, sorry, I'm not, for volleyball and games, they have special, I don't know, criteria, I guess, for padding the holes, which we don't have, so that's going to be something that they're going to, which is costly.
Good. Okay.
Maybe they'll want to do some sponsorships to get some naming.
There you go. As long as we actually get some, that floor refinished, I think we're all, however you have to pay for it, we're fine. So if you can save money, great.
Okay, so this, this totals...
Hold on, Steve, we need consensus on the Memorial Gym. So do we have consensus on that? Okay.
All right, so this is a further reduction of $393,859.50 that's been accomplished tonight. You add that to the council's first level of reductions at $628,000, you have now reduced it by $1,022,626. Drumroll, rolling over to the green, puts you at 6.07%, a net increase to taxation of estimated at $1,246,939 year over year.
Jonathan?
Thank you, Steve. Just for maybe the audience, can you tweak that to take out what's covering the recently approved fire station, just to show what that would be without that?
Six, 306.
And the reason he's doing that is because the public voted for that bond on that, which becomes our cost. So the public needs to know when you vote for a bond, it's above and beyond what the expenses are for our budget.
306, 260.
So I'm off by $260? Yes, okay.
That's a very good point, Jonathan, so people understand that. Yeah, I think that's great, yep.
Sorry, Steve, I thought that would be just a one-line tweak somewhere.
It is, as long as Excel behaves here, so, it's just not behaving well yet.
You know, Steve always says that, but sometimes I don't think he knows how to use the program.
No. 306, 20? Oh, I'm recalculating, come on, Ronnie, why?
Got a pencil and paper up here, Steve, if you need.
My numbers are slightly off from yours, Steve, but it's like right at 4.5% increase net to taxation.
4.58, yeah.
It's like, I'm close to you.
You see that, Jonathan?
Yes, thank you. So it looks like right around 4.6%.
He behinds me, argues over 28 cents, so.
And that, and that doesn't take into account the increase in assessment from new, I keep saying new stuff that was built this year.
When, when do we expect to be able to roll that?
There's a little over $20 million of value in that category right now, so that's an additional $336,000 or so.
Okay, and that'll, we'll see that in the next week or two, whenever our next meeting? Okay, thank you.
$332,953 is today's estimate, so.
So so far, we're doing extremely good budget. Kind of good that we don't look at that because it, the new assessed value has, is kind of factored across the school and the municipality, but it's nice to know that it's still out there as we're working. Yeah, yes. All right.
So with that rolled in, since you're playing with numbers, what does that look like? Just for giggles, if you can. 332K, is that?
4.5.
You did a 4.58.
Oh, okay.
You missed it.
Was, was... So the 4.58 wasn't for the, removing the fire station?
That was removing the fire station.
Okay.
But the extra funds that would come in, I mean, really means we're going to be down.
Yeah, I was just curious.
But I would caution everybody that the school has a budget, too. Yes. And all that new dollar amount goes to school and the city, so, okay. So it's better to throw it in once we do schoolwork.
We'll throw it in later, all right. Thank you, Steve.
Any more questions?
This links over to the tax rate calculation sheet, so it brings in the new municipal numbers, has the numbers that were issued to us by the school department at last Monday's meeting, the March 4th meeting. So that puts us at a position of an estimated increase of a dollar and one cent per thousand.
That's combined, Steve?
Yes.
School, municipal.
And is that 6.25% correct overall?
Jonathan, you look puzzled.
I'm a little bit puzzled, so we get down to right around 6% for municipal side. Last I recall, the school budget was 11-something, maybe that changed. But then combined, we're getting, we're down at 6.25 for overall, is that correct?
That's what the numbers are telling me tonight. I'd have to go back and check this, but I know, I know for municipal only, isolating our numbers, I know that 6.07% is a good number.
You're bringing a lot of reference. Yeah, I'm getting like 8.3 or something funny.
Yeah, so I might have...
Are you working this live? No. No.
But if you're using the tax rate projection sheet, you're using valuation, school, county tax, this is just municipal revenue.
The other one wasn't, though.
He switched to what the one with school.
I may not have it all listed properly, so.
Okay. It's a lot of numbers, obviously.
Thank you.
So could we have the, I would feel comfortable seeing what that looks like with the school budget in there, so that when they come and present, we would know what that...
We'll easily have that for you for next Monday.
Okay, thank you.
So what I would like to do is, based upon the council's dialogue tonight for the yeas and ayes we have on these, all of these amendment sheets, we would then bring that forward for a summary for the 18th, March 18th meeting, right? Well, that, that will be the summary, that'll go to the public as far as the municipal budget is concerned, and then the public hearing, at the council meeting level, they will then present on that. Public will give feedback on, based upon what's sitting here tonight.
I think that we are done for this evening then.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
The public hearing is, yeah, next Tuesday. No, the public hearing isn't next Tuesday.
Yeah, public hearing.
School, oh, school presents first, then the public hearing.
School presents first?
Yeah. Yeah. So school presents first, and then as part of our meeting, the regular council meeting, we have the public hearing?
Yes.
Good. And is that public hearing usually done first? Like, is it first on the agenda? We put it on the agenda, I thought we put it on the agenda for the city council, or do we do it for the budget part?
No, the public hearing's on the council agenda.
So we'll still have the school present everything, right? And then we'll do the... At 5:00. Yep. And then our regular meeting at 7:00. And that's where the public hearing? The regular meeting, 7:00 or 6:00? 7:00. Perfect, okay. I think it's a good time because most people know... 7:00.
Snacks.
Snacks?
Snacks, yeah.
Okay, snacks.
Hit them tonight, right?
All right. Nobody ever eats when we offer up snacks, we get everything for everybody, you guys never eat.
Are you going to have to redo the wedges on your cookie now?
I'll update the wedges, I'll bring more.